Oh, welcome to the regular meeting of the municipal council for the town of Chandary on this July 16th, 2025. We're a little bit past 6:30. Welcome to all members of the public and all those who are joining us online. I would like to highlight that this is our first meeting with our new C E O Michel, we welcome him. Try not to be too, too hard on him tonight. So we'll give him the the, the first kick at the can without too much trouble. I declared the meeting open. And before moving forward, I would like to ask Nous reconnaissons que la ville de Chandary est située sur les terres traditionnelles et nos salles de déplum nous reconnaissons et respectons la relation permanente qui existe entre les autres cannes et leur territoire traditionnel. Seulement remercions pour l'opportunité. Thank you, Council Michel. We're going to move on to the agenda. You've all received the agenda. I would like to first off add a point to 11A, which would be a closed in camera session for Article 68 C D E F G. And following this, I would like to add to the point H, Treasury Report. Are there any other additions? Mister Mayor, I would like to add a new business item. A light on the road. I missed the road name. So we'll add that to the agenda. Anything else to add? Seeing nothing, I would accept a motion to accept the agenda with modifications. I propose that we accept the agenda with modifications proposed by Council Richard, seconded by councillor Leger. All those in favor signify with a yes. All those against, motion adopted. I would now like to remind councillors to speak directly into the microphone. Put it right in front of your mouth. Otherwise, the interpreter cannot cap what you're saying. So try to avoid turning your head to the side while speaking. And so the next point would be conflict of interest declarations, if there are any. Seeing none, we'll move on to point four, which is the adoption of the minutes. We have the first one on the 17th of June. I would take a motion to adopt the minutes posed by councillor Bastarache. Mister Mayor, I second the proposition seconded by councillor Colmier. Can you put your mic down just a little bit? Perfect. All those in favor signify with a yes. All those against, motion adopted. Moving on to point 4B, which is the minutes from July 7th, 2025, I would require a motion to adopt the minutes. Mister Mayor, I propose adopting the minutes posed by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Lozier, who could also just put your mic down a little bit. All those in favor, please signify with a yes. All those against, motion adopted. We're now going to move to point number five, a business arising from the minutes. If you have any points that you would like to bring forth, do not or are not already included in the agenda for the day. So seeing no business arising from the minutes, moving on to the 7th of July, any business arising from those minutes? Everything's clear so far. Thank you. We'll move on to point number six, public presentations, where there are none. Following that correspondence, we have one correspondence, which is something we received from the Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure, advising us that the request for funding for provincial municipal problems, which we also know as PRPM for 2028 are now being accepted. So they're accepting financing requests for 2028. We also received a letter that told us there was no money from here to 2027. So there's a little bit of a gap from now till then. But we have moved forward with this. Our engineering firm is advising us. It's already been done. We've discussed it. And they will advise us on the pertinent events for us in 2028 to take advantage of that program. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we're going to move to the next point, which would be point eight, the interim mayor's report. On that, you've all received my reports, my weekly reports every week, as well as a compilation, which I sent you all today of all those reports with some slight modifications. So I would be ready to take any questions or comments on the reports submitted. Seeing no questions or clarifications required. Thank you. Moving on to the acting C E O report, which I think she was very busy doing other things. And she hasn't had a chance to put together a report. So we will give her an exception on this report. However, the next month for the new C E O, there's going to be a report. I've talked to him this morning. He's identifying what he's going to put together. He's going to compile all the discussions and meetings we've had, and he will have a report. We're looking forward to see. Moving on to committee reports on point 10A, administration, finance and human resources councillor Bastarache. Thank you, Mister Mayor. A tiny little report since the last meeting. We have only had one meeting. Many subjects were discussed. And many of which are already in the agenda for the day. Several files are being paused. Be patient. That is the shortest administration, finance and human resource report of all time. Moving on to municipal operations councillor Colmier. Thank you, Mister Mayor. I hope you can all hear me well. Mine is a little longer. My report for tonight is on the state of activities in with regards to infrastructure and solid waste collection. We've had several discussions. And the committee has decided to ask the council. The solid, a solid waste should be combined with the Kent Regional Service Commission starting in 2027. We have concluded that the solid waste collection should be conducted in a uniform fashion. I can't understand it. And the project is in two phases. Phase one, which is major, the technical analysis is underway to determine if the fourth well partially constructed on the planning is should be done in December of this year. Phase two is construction works. The forecasted date for the end of works is December 2026. And the for our drinking water. The demands on our water systems with the new developments. I can't, I can't understand what you're saying. We're already at eighty-five to ninety percent capacity. The best solutions, technical solution to increase capacity report will be presented to us in the fall on the routes inside of Saint-Antoine need to be rebuilt and rehabilitate or repaired. And we should issue a tender or a plan for the works that need to be done as well as a roadmap, which will permit us to better plan and integrate the costs into our provisional budgets for the municipality. The impact of development on our drinking water system and our sewer system. We are working to evaluate the impact of the current developments and see what the effect on the capacity of our systems on long term and short term and long term. Other infrastructure projects, all equally essential, are currently underway or being studied by the committee in order to ensure the correct progress of the projects. And this concludes my report. I apologize. I missed a lot of that. Thank you, councillor Colmier. Any counts, any questions for councillor Colmier? Seeing no questions. The next two are going to be mine. The first is public safety. Or no, that would be for the ATV and Somerville Trails. There hasn't been a meeting. However, I've had a discussion with Jacques Willard from Quad N B on the 30th of June, and we discussed the changes. Or he informed me of the changes in the process or highway usage permit, also known as H O P. He advises me that other municipalities who currently have requests are living, are seeing difficulties with regards to the process because they follow the wrong process or the process has changed. And he wanted to advise us a little bit as to how to proceed. Happily, the process we undertook was to, to create a master bylaw and then attach subsequent bylaws to it. And what Quatendy and the province, that's what they want to see. So we didn't know that we were on the right track, but it turned out that we were. But the process we undertook is exactly what they want to see, and that is a good resume of our discussions. The next step for that committee will be a meeting with Quad and B for our bylaw. And over the course of that meeting, we discussed how how the other municipalities are dealing with these problematic situations. And it remains a challenge for, for many of those municipalities. They're looking forward to seeing what we're going to put into our bylaw to make sure that we don't have any problems with said bylaw down the road. And that's the direction in which we're heading. Do we have any questions on that? Following this quickly on the municipal boundaries committee, as you know, we had an interview with CBC last week following the decision of Gao Book Tush to not appeal our request with regards to the local governance group. I remind everybody, the process, the process is that we submit to local governance. We've done that following this. Book Tush had to give their opinion on the situation, which they did. And one part of the information that's going to do the part of our final report. The other aspect is a survey to be sent out to citizens, sent by mail, has been sent already as well as a delivery in kind, in hand to all the cottages that would, that would be affected by this demand because they don't receive mail. So we have a citizen who has accepted to deliver these by hand. All this will end with a meeting on the 22nd in McKees Mills in order to receive their answer, if they are ready to give it, as well as presentations for and against. So we're going to receive that without necessarily we're going to get their feedback at that. Following this, that's going to feed our final report, which we will submit to the local governance commission, following the legal process. And following that is what we do is hurry up and wait. So we're going to hurry up and then we're going to wait. There's a forty-five day period. That is the process. And so we're going to follow it. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this file? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Which is point 11A. So point 11A, we have some discussions, quick discussions in, in closed session. If I could have a resolution to go into a closed camera or an in camera, Mister Mayor, I propose that the municipal council moves into a closed camera session with regard, due to the law of local governance, in order to discuss the file that's related to Article 16 C through G. Anybody to second? I second the resolution. All those in favor signify with a yes. All those against? Motion adopted, resolution adopted. Like to have a resolution in order to come back into a regular meeting. I would propose that the regular meeting resumes, Mister Mayor, proposed by councillor Leger, seconded by councillor Bastarache. All those in favor signify with a yes. All those against, motion adopted. Moving on to point 11B, which is the rezoning request for P I D two, five, one, six, nine, one, five, two, and two, five, one, six, eight, seven, five, eight. We have a request for rezoning. You have a copy here. It's essentially to move from an R one to an R two zoning. So you have the opportunity to look at what was proposed. The prop, the proposal was submitted, and I would like to know what the will of the council would be with regards to this. Mister Mayor, I'm ready to read the resolution. Exemption request, P I Ds two, five, one, six, nine, one, one, five, two, and two, five, one, six, eight, seven, five, eight. At the town of Chandary, requests the recommendation to the review and planning committee of the Kent Regional Services Commission for the property bearing P I Ds two, five, one, six, nine, one, five, two, as well as two, five, one, six, eight, seven, five, eight, as presented. Thank you. Anybody to second the motion? I second the motion, Mister Mayor. Seconded. Are there any questions on the resolution? I would remind you, for those who are not aware, that this is the first step. We're now going to send this to the regional service commission, and they will come back to us with a recommendation, and we will move forward with that. All those in favor signify with a yes. All those against? Motion adopted. Moving on to point 11C, a community agent for the DSFS. As you know, to give you a little bit of background, and those who are watching us, we have had a few vacant posts, one being the community agent, our development officer. And in the interim, there have been budget cuts from the minister. And they contacted us to see if we were interested in a partnership with other community agents. I'd like to thank everybody who's worked on this file because there was discussions had with all of the officers, the school districts, negotiations, clarifications on the goals. And therefore, I would like to profoundly thank all those who participated. I think Donald, Donat was there as well as Jason. Is there anybody I'm missing? So thank you for your hard work. Donald, would you talk to us a little bit about that?
Yep. It's for the community development officer, is that there would be a share with the two schools, Saint Antoine and Saint Marie. It would be a good partnership to move forward with. Thank you. You've also seen the recommendation that was given to us. I'd be ready to accept a resolution if it was the will of the council. Mister Mayor, I'm ready to read the resolution. Community development officer partnership offer with the Francophone School District, whereas a meeting was held with the principals of Camille Vautour and Mon Carmel to assess the feasibility and relevance of a partnership. Whereas the partnership would involve the creation of two community development officer positions hired by the Francophone School District, but shared between the schools and the municipality at an estimated cost of seventy-two thousand dollars annually for a three-year period. Whereas increased support for the organization and implementation of community activities in Chandary's four neighborhoods, be it resolved that the town of Chandary accepts the DSFS partnership offer. Thank you for the resolution. Is there somebody to second it? Mister Mayor, I second the resolution. Perfect. I will open for questions. If anybody has any concerns, questions or opinions around the table. Go ahead, councillor Bastarache. I have a question on the three-year contract. Are, are we, are we obligated to go for three years? Or is there a shorter term that we can go with? Is the contract strictly three years? And I will pass the mic. It's been recommended and proposed by the school district to have the option to pull out of the contract after one year. So we're not quite at that point yet. I've sent an email to the school district. And we were ready to meet them, so I'm waiting for a follow-up from them. And as stated in the report that was sent to you, myself and Jason were conscious of the fact that we would like the option to withdraw from the contract after one year if and when we would desire. And thank you for the question. Are there any others? Now, if I understand correctly, Mister Mayor, after twelve months, uh, it means that weekends, I am missing that. He's turning. That would be the goal. We're going to read the resolution. We've had the discussion. If everybody's ready for the vote, signify with a yes. All those against? Hmm, a resolution adopted. And my constant, my conclusion on that is we find ourselves with two people who are already pre-qualified because they already do the work. So it's a perfect fit for us. I think that Donald, if you'll allow me, we also have experience in the municipalities and examples of where it's working well already. So we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're doing a little bit of what other municipalities have done to great success. And we're looking forward to work with them and welcome to the team. Now we have point 11D, which is the reserve fund for Saint Marie Community Park. I would like to bring you back to last year where we approved an amount of money for the creation of the park in Saint Marie, which was not completed in 2024. Therefore, we had to take fifteen thousand dollars and put it in the reserve fund with the intent that we would put it out of the reserve fund this year and give it to that project through the general operations. But now in order to prepare for this, I would ask if we are still ready to withdraw the money from the reserve fifteen thousand dollars, which had been set aside for this project. I would remind you that we cannot we can't specify an amount in the reserve fund. So you can say no, you can say yes. At this point in time, we're getting ready to spend that money, and it has been budgeted in, in the budget. So I would have a, I would accept a resolution on that front. Mister Mayor, I would read the resolution. Reserve Fund, Saint Marie Community Park, whereas an amount of fifteen thousand dollars had been set aside in the general operating reserve fund for the Saint Marie Community Park project. Whereas the project in question has been underway for several weeks. Be it resolved that the amount of fifteen thousand dollars be returned to the general operations on to pay invoices for said project. Anybody to second the resolution? Seconded by councillor Bastarache. Any discussion or questions on the resolution? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor signify with a yes. All those in opposition, motion adopted. Point 11E, water and sewer charges. We received a request for a temporary suspension of water and sewer charges, which you've all received in your correspondences. And it's simply a matter of putting it off to a point where the project is sufficiently advanced to allow people to move in to the building. Does the council desire, is it the will of the council to move forward with the resolution to this effect? Mister Mayor, I would read the resolution. I'd like to remind everybody that's, you know, we definitely want the development to happen in this area. And I think that this is a necessity, in my opinion, to build. And they're going to pay municipal taxes in the range of forty thousand dollars per year. And I think we should give them a chance to start generating revenue, rent. They want to wait until the project is sufficiently advanced before paying, before we send them a bill. So it's a temporary suspension of the water and sewage fees for billing until such time when the project is sufficiently advanced in order to allow new renters to move in. I'd be ready to read a resolution to this effect. I propose that the move that the water and sanitary billing only be sent to the property owner following confirmation from the Kent Regional Service Commission that construction on the property ID number two, five, four, nine, seven, one, seven, three has been completed and that the development meets the commission's criteria. You've heard the resolution. Is there somebody to support? Second, seconded by councillor. Seconded by councillor Lozier. Are there any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with a yes. All those in opposition, motion adopted. Next point, 11F. It is with great pleasure that I, I bring you the news that we have new firefighters. They're not really new, but they've passed their probationary period. And it's always a great pleasure when we hear that we're adding assets to our firefighting team, which is an essential asset to our community. Therefore, we have the administrative task to formally welcome them. Would somebody be ready to read the resolution? Mister Mayor, I'd read the resolution. Acceptance of new firefighters, whereas Le Cumeau, Danic Leger, Justin Lewis and Matt McCameron have successfully completed their probationary period as members of the Saint Antoine Fire Department. Whereas the fire chief has recommended their official acceptance as firefighters in good standing with that department. Be it therefore resolved that the council of the Ville de Chandary hereby accepts Le Cumeau, Danic Nige, Justin Lewis and Matt McCarron as firefighters with the Saint Antoine Fire Department effective immediately. You've heard the resolution. Are there any, anybody to second it? Mister Mayor, I second the resolution. Seconded by councillor Colmier. Are there any questions on the resolution? All those in favor signify with a yes. All those in opposition, motion adopted, resolution adopted. Point 11G, solid waste. You all know that we have a specific situation in the region. And we have to go through a certain steps. I'm going to leave councillor Colmier to talk to us a little bit about this. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yes. As I mentioned in my report on the collection of solid waste, the situation where we are going to join the regional service commission, as mentioned, to join in and have one system in common. We have to pass a resolution of council to allow the commission to get ready for this fall, September, October, to go get pricing for optimized waste collection for 2027. So we, I think, if we would like to join the commission, we would need a resolution to that effect today. Whereas the town of Chandary is committed to ensuring an effective and efficient solid waste management for its residents. Whereas the Kent Regional Services Commission, K R S C, is coordinating a regional solid waste management contract for the year 2027 to promote consistency, cost effectiveness and environmental responsibility among its member communities. and environmental responsibility among its member communities. Whereas the Ville de Chanderie has reviewed the proposal and supports the collaborative approach to solid waste management as facilitated by the KSRC, including the collection and be it resolved that the council of the Ville de Chanderie agrees to participate in the twenty twenty-seven solid waste management contract coordinated by the Kent Regional Services Commission, including the transfer of all responsibilities related to the collection of solid waste to the KRSC in the goal of joining in twenty twenty-seven. Be it further resolved that the Ville de Chanderie will work with the KSRC to fulfill any administrative, financial or operational requirements necessary for its participation in the contract. Thank you. You've heard the resolution. Anybody to second the resolution? Seconded by councillor Bastarash. Are there any questions, clarifications, discussions on the resolution? Just to remind everybody that this applies to the region of Saint Antoine. And all that outside of Saint Antoine is already with the regional service commission. So this was a necessary step, and I would equally, before moving on to the vote, highlight the work of Ujard. Ujard presides the committee, knows the subject very well, and guided us through this entire process in order to arrive at today's resolution. The decision whether to join or remain independent. On that note, all those in favor signify with a yes. All those in opposition, motion adopted. Point eleven H, treasurer. As you know, the law of local governance requires that we have a clerk, a treasurer. We now have in our CAO that occupies the clerk post, now we have to appoint someone to the treasurer's post. And we have somebody that's already doing the work, but it would require a resolution to render it official. I would read the resolution, Mr. Mayor. Interim treasurer. Whereas the municipality of Chanderie requires a treasurer. Be it therefore resolved that I have missed the name, be named treasurer for the town of Chanderie. Somebody to second? I second, Mr. Mayor. You've heard the resolution. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with a yes. All those in opposition? Resolution adopted. Point twelve, unfinished business. I have one. Next point, new business. We have one point from councillor Bastarash. Yes, I would like that we do a resolution to put lights on some road in Saint Marie. There's some development going to happen there, and we were looking to put lights on all the poles. I'd like to make a resolution that we approach empty power in order to install lights on the posts for on the corner of seventy-five and that the request be submitted as early as possible. You've all heard the resolution. Is there somebody to second it? Seconded correctly. I would just like to maybe clarify something here. Evidently, in this resolution, we would include those holes in our project with what we're calling contributions, where we would pay for the poles. Are there any questions on the resolution? All those in favor signify with a yes. All those in opposition? Resolution adopted. And we're coming up to my favorite part of the meeting, which is questions from the public. Do we have any questions from the public today? Seeing none. I would thank the public as always for participating. And point fifteen, I would ask for a resolution for the adjournment of the meeting. Thank you to all. And we got it done within an hour. Congrats, everybody. Thank you very much.